Right, I'm gonna call meeting in order if we rise to pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kristi Dunn.
Here.
Kristi Campbell.
Here.
Kristi Cook.
Yes.
Kristi Fritz.
Here.
Kristi Beaton.
Here.
Kristi Thomas.
Yes.
Kristi Manning.
Present. Hey. We might need a more patient, so if they're, uh, reading of conservation ethic, Lynn? Oh, you're not ready.
Oh, right.
Are you, you got that? Sorry about that.
That's okay. No, that's. Um, goal number six, to foster. Okay, to foster conservation ethic among McHenry County citizens, helping all of us, regardless of the basis of our interest in nature, to develop a greater awareness of our role in and responsibility for the total community of life. Conservation ethic asks us to assume a moral duty of educated about conservation issues and then to act on that information. The conservation ethic is an attitude that recognizes the importance of preserving the natural purity to the county's open space. Well, number three, to manage its areas in such a, in such manner that archaeological and historical resources are integrated with natural resources for optimal preservation, education, and recreation benefits.
Thank you. Uh, Chris, can you do the reading of its conservation stewardship pledge, please?
Yes, we pledge to make a difference by staying up for our water, wildlife, and way of life in McHenry County. Quality of life in McHenry County depends on healthy and sustainable natural resources. Thoughtfully develop cities and towns, strong economy, and beautiful outdoor places to explore, discover, and recreate. Number six, we will spark hope for a future where closely defined with the natural world.
Yeah.
Getting that backseat a little bit.
Yeah.
Sounds like maybe it's still. Your motion to adopt the agenda?
My motion.
Ed, Linda, Linda has a second then. Roll call.
Kristi Beaton.
Yes.
Kristi Fritz.
Yes.
Kristi Campbell.
Yes.
Kristi Cook.
Yes.
Kristi Thomas.
Yes.
Kristi Dunn.
Yes.
Kristi Manning.
Yes. Motion to adopt the agenda is approved. It was to special recognitions, uh, executive director, press orders, and to recognize each of these special people and put in a great deal of time to help make the conservation district what it is today, so.
Well, we have sixteen honorees this evening that are celebrating circus awards this year, and we go everything from five years all the way to thirty-five, so I just wanna highlight them for you, give you a little bit of background, and then we'll put more extensive information out in the week, wow, for you. Celebrating five years, we have three employees, Jacob Holmes, Dylan Ryman, and Debbie Bartman. First of all, Jacob Holmes started with the Conservation District in January of twenty sixteen. He began his employment in Region Six, and he maintains sites in the southeast corner of McHenry County. Currently, Assistant Ranger Holmes is responsible for the maintenance and upkeep of the following parks, Prairie, Prairie Education Center, Exeter Marsh, The Hollows, Bogger Barrow, and Bloom Creek. He serves on numerous committees here in the district, um, sites and fleet retreat committees. He's currently serving on our Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee, and he also happens to be on our Sites and Fleet Local One Fifty Professional Development Committee. So, uh, we congratulate Jacob on his, his five years. Dylan Ryman, uh, Dylan began his employment with the Conservation District as a seasonal staff worker in Region Six in twenty fifteen. Dylan was hired as the Assistant Ranger for Region Five in January of twenty sixteen. In twenty twenty, Dylan made the move to Region One, where he currently works with Ranger Steve Stavonow, and both of them are responsible for the maintenance and upkeep of the following sites, Glacial Park, Harrison Benwell, Prairie Trail North, Spring Grove Landing, Pioneer Landing, Nipper Saint Commune Base, Hebron Trail, Elizabeth Lake, Nipper Saint North Ranch, and the Lost Valley Visitor Center grounds. He's also served on numerous internal committees, and he also has taken a lead role in working with our Eagle Scouts on their projects that take place in Region One. Debbie Bartman has worked for the district as a regular part-time team member for five years, and you can find her greeting guests at the Lost Valley Visitor Center or in the field with our natural resources team collecting seeds or planting trees, and during the global pandemic, Debbie offered her assistance to help here at the Brookdale Administrative Offices in bringing in mail and skin invoices to send out to team members who were working remotely and keep some distance. So, those are our five-year honorees. Celebrating ten years, we have Eric Lundstrom, and Eric began his employment with the Conservation District in January of twenty eleven as an Assistant Ranger in Region Four. He currently works with Ranger Dave Vecchio in Region Four, and they maintain the following sites, The Highlands, Lyons Prairie, and Marsh Riverfront, Fel Pro Triple R, Silver Creek, Fox Fluff, and the Lake and the Hills Bend. He's a past member of the Safety Committee. He was very instrumental in the reconstruction of the Fel Pro Triple R Disc Golf, which is proven to be very popular. It was improvements to nine holes and the development of an additional nine holes. He works very closely with our Disc Golf volunteer group, and because of his efforts, uh, this is one of the most highly rated play golf courses in the region. Celebrating fifteen years, we have Karen Grebe. Karen started with the district in two thousand and six as the land and facilities administrative assistant. Fifteen years later, she is now the administrative assistant for the Sites and Fleet Department in the Facilities Maintenance. She is responsible for the district's reservation program, which includes our camping permits, shelter and picnic permits, and special use permits. Just until recently, Karen was also responsible for the district's cell phone program, which included the purchasing of phones, packages, and district employee services. She's very involved with our fuel program and is responsible for monitoring, ordering our fuel, gathering information through month-end fuel reconciliation and for fuel delivery and good letting. She takes responsibility for tracking and ordering purchases of district uniforms, and she's also been part of numerous sites and fleet retreat committees, and currently serves on our internal housing committee. Wendy Coomer, uh, she began with the district in two thousand and six and immediately took on the task to increase awareness and outreach of the Conservation District, is identified in the district's first strategic plan. During her early years, she assisted in transitioning and outfaded landscapes to the premier award-winning publication. It is today, assisted with educating the public on the district's two thousand and seven referendum, rebranded with a new logo. In years that followed, the district would expand its reach by hiring on a social media specialist and increasing community engagement through Facebook, Twitter, YouTube, Pinterest, and Google My Business. Under Wendy's leadership, the district continued to promote the district's conservation leadership through numerous award applications at the local, state, regional, and national level. The district would work collaboratively with the McHenry County Conservation Foundation and other community partners. In two thousand and twenty, Wendy was promoted to the Director of Marketing and Education, whereby the education services team was placed under her leadership for better agency alignment. Wendy has a BS in marketing and advertising from Bradley and is a master's in marketing communications from Roosevelt University. Lori Ryan began with the district. She interned in two thousand and three with the newly launched Research Field Station Program in Glacial Park for the summer. She very quickly went into the summer, and this young official's career, Ed Collins noted that, that she was someone that, uh, with her work ethic that he wanted to have on the team. She grew up with a family-owned horticultural business in Minnesota, and therefore began working with the district. She finished, um, she had an internship here, she finished her BS degree in conservation from the University of Wisconsin River Falls. She then worked with Conservation Land Management with the Chicago Potana Gardens, and then with the U.S. Bureau of Land Management in West Eugene Wetlands Project in Eugene, Oregon. She has become one of the, uh, very well-known for her accomplishments with the seed collection and processing building that program to which has reached, uh, its, its efforts today, uh, saving the district's hundreds and dozens of dollars. Lori has also an incredible regional reputation, uh, she's contributed to dozens of first-ever plant specimens from McHenry County for the latest edition of the flora of the Chicago region, which is a sought, she's a sought-after trainer for rare plant monitoring, has served on the awards committee for the Chicago Wilderness Excellence and Ecological Restoration Program, and has numerous conservation groups and public agencies in developing their methods for native prairie plants. Beth Gunderson. Celebrating twenty years, Beth started working at the Wildlife Resource Center as a landing turtle head start project was taking off. She's researched and developed new and innovative ways to upgrade the raising of turtles that are in our care. She's an integral part of the many other projects that follow into the Wildlife Resource Center goals, including the propagation and release of the Orange Door daughters, the barn owl, telemetry tracking with the Page County, the housing of rescued freshwater mussels, the smooth green snake captive ruring head start project, and wildlife rehabilitation. She's diva, designed and developed numerous educational programs and taught thousands of individuals in programs, as well as answered tens and thousands of inquiries over the years. Steve Steubenberg started working with the district in May of two thousand and one as a construction worker for the land and facilities department. In two thousand and thirteen, the land and facilities department was restructured and the facilities maintenance department was created. Steve's job title was changed at that time to maintenance worker one. In two thousand and eighteen, Steve was promoted from maintenance worker one to maintenance worker two. Steve has served as one of the stewards for the district's local union one fifty operator members for many years. He holds a commercial driver's license and is designated as one of the district's heavy equipment operators. He also repairs our auto gates and fabricates and installs signage, and is very talented in construction. Celebrating twenty-five years is Chad Seacor. Chad began his employment with the district as a seasonal staff member, working in Regions Two and Three. He was hired as the Assistant Ranger for Regions Two and Three in nineteen ninety-six. At that time, Regions Two and Three had one ranger and one assistant ranger responsible for the maintenance of our sites. This was because there were only four sites at that time, Coral Woods, Merango Ridge, Rush Creek, and Bex Woods. In nineteen ninety-seven, Chad was promoted to Region Four Ranger, where he worked for six years. In two thousand and thirteen, the region had three positions which became available, and Chad made the lateral move back to where he began. Ranger Seacor is responsible for the maintenance and upkeep of the following sites in Ranger Three, in Region Three, Merango Ridge, Coral Woods, Pleasant Valley, County Line, Huntley Union, Merango Regional Multi-Use Trail, and Kishawaki Headwaters. Chad takes great pride in the maintenance of the sites, paying attention to detail, and it shows. Ryan Stewart started with the district as a police officer in nineteen ninety-six. Through years, Ryan provided service and protection to the district as an officer, showing leadership abilities as a patrol officer. In two thousand and twelve, Ryan was promoted to sergeant. He continues to serve in that role today. Ryan is a graduate of the Northwestern University School of Police Staff and Command, and was the two thousand and nineteen Illinois Association of Chiefs of Police Rising Shield Award recipient. He continues to provide leadership to police operations and is recognized by his peers and supervisors alike as an asset to the team. He currently supervises day shift patrol operations, as well as many areas of specialty assignments. Last one here, my apologies, Sarah Rebecca Murphy. I'll go back here to get her. Rebecca Murphy started working part-time for the district when the Wildlife Rehab Center was in full swing and was accepting native species. Although she continues as a part-time, she began fully engaged in the many projects that have happened at the Wildlife Resource Center since then, including the rehab program, now emphasizing species of conservation concern, the propagation and release of the orange door daughters and radio telemetry tracking of captive rare barn owls, the housing of rescued freshwater mussels, the expansion of landing turtles head start program, the smooth green snake head start program, as well as the expansion of educational programming. She has taught thousands of young students with extremely short attention spans and answered tens of thousands of wildlife-related inquiries from the public through the years. Rebecca has handled numerous and various duties at Wildlife Resource Center with extraordinary dedication and was human. And Rebecca was saying, I'm celebrating twenty-five years. Celebrating thirty years is Perry Reeborg. Perry Reeborg started with the district as a ranger when the district was much smaller and Regions Two and Three were combined. He worked out of the Coralwood Shop and managed the four main parks of Bex Woods, Rush Creek, Merango Ridge, and Coral Woods Conservation Areas. With the expansion of the early two thousands and the addition of several parks on the west side of the county, the region was split and Perry exclusively focused on Region Two sites. Showing leadership ability, Perry was promoted to land and facility supervisor in two thousand and eight, when he worked until the district restructured in two thousand and thirteen. In two thousand and thirteen, Perry was again promoted to sites and fleet manager. Perry brings a calm demeanor to the position of the operations sites and fleet team, and he believes in empowering his staff to handle their tasks. Perry has been a great addition to the leadership structure of the district and has a tremendous, and serves as a tremendous advisor to the directors. Brad Woodson. Ed Collins first met Brad Woodson in the summer of nineteen eighty-six, the first year he started at the district as a Region One Ranger. Over the next few years, Brad became a regular seasonal worker in this region during the summer, and his admiration for his work ethic and can-do attitude grew over those years. Brad completed the Bachelor of Science from the University of Iowa Ames in May of nineteen eighty-nine with a concentration in fisheries and wildlife, graduating on a dean's list of distinguished students. After graduation, he worked for Lee County in Iowa as a roadside management specialist. He was responsible for the implementation of the Integrated Roadside Management Plan, which involved all aspects of prairie restoration on seven hundred miles of roads covering three thousand four hundred acres. In late nineteen ninety-one, Brad accepted the job as a restoration ecologist with the district, specializing in wildlife aspects of the Natural Resources Management Department. In April of two thousand and three, he was promoted to Natural Resources Supervisor, responsible for management and restoration of the natural features on District lands. Again, in twenty nineteen, twenty thirteen, he was promoted to Natural Resources Manager with the newly reorganized Land Preservation and Natural Resources Management Division. He is currently responsible for management and restoration of activities on twenty-five thousand five hundred acres of land. Brad's accomplishments are many and varied. They include co-development of the recreational hunting program and the Lake and the Hills deer removal program. He was instrumental in implementing many regional recognized restoration projects, including the Nipper Saint Creek detankalization and the farm bioreactor installation. He served as Illinois, I burned, president from thirteen to twenty fourteen, and is a in science of living the good life. He has also found time to serve as a volunteer coach for basketball, soccer, and baseball. He's a certified wildlife biologist, certified IDNR prescribed burn manager, certified wildland firefighter and crew boss with the National Wildfire Coordinating Group, and IDNR certified sharpshooter, and has recently become a certified farm manager. Lastly, thirty-five years, we have some talented team members here, I shall say, don't we? Very proud of them. Anyone in the Chicago Wilderness Region who is connected to conservation knows the legendary work of Ed Collins. Those who've had the privilege to collaborate with Ed know he prefers to work behind the scenes, and he's not like to draw a lot of attention to himself directly, but rather directs attention to his gold innovative ideas and land epic stewardship. Over the years, Collins has developed extensive knowledge of the natural resources field with an MA in Geography and Environmental Studies from Northeastern Illinois University. During his lifetime, he has emerged as an individual who is highly respected for his aspirational conservation vision, promoter of grand ideas for large landscape ecological restoration, an initiator of scientific research and land management first, a storyteller who is proficient in prose, one that learned early on that technology and scientific data is your friend, a consensus builder and a conservation champion who advocates for the natural world. Ed began with the district in nineteen eighty-six as a Region One Ranger, then moved up to be the Natural Resources Manager, and then was promoted to the Director of Land Preservation and Natural Resources of the district in two thousand and thirteen. Her highlights include the creation of the Chicago Wilderness and the Biodiversity Recovery Plan, meandering of the Nipper Saint Creek, establishment of the Hattie Tech National Wildlife Refuge, Hope Ecosystem Study, School Springs Mitigation Wetland Bank, Agricultural Conservation Index, index, McHenry County's Natural Areas Inventory of the Zinapay, two referendums, and the protection of approximately twenty-three thousand plus or minus acres of open space through a land preservation and natural capital plan. The Trail of History, which was started in nineteen eighty-nine to prevent the epidemic four-twenty from destroying Glacial Park. He shares a deep passion for cultural history and serves as a mentor for emerging professionals. He is a sought-after speaker and is a friend to all things wild. Congratulations, Ed, on your thirty-five years. Wendy is also being honored by Chicago Wilderness's two thousand and twenty-one George V. Rab Force of Nature Award, and that will be given on December eighth. So, my congratulations to all of our team members that have service anniversaries this year, and I know coming up behind them will be plenty more in the following years to come. So, again, appreciating all of their service.
Well, thank you to each and every one of you. It certainly is a pleasure to work with all of you and not all of you that I've met, but I know that the work gets done, and, uh, the board certainly appreciates everything that's done there, so, thank you. Not just the board, but I, I think the public as a whole.
You too.
I just forgot you.
Well, you didn't say your own.
I'm talking to her, okay?
Very good.
Yeah, we, we noticed that.
That was a two organizational excellence showcase, and I believe that Shawna was going to leave that, correct?
She is. Shawna, are you on?
I am, I'm here.
Right, very good.
All right, um, so, thank you all for having me here today. But I'm, I am going to not only give you kind of an overview of who the McHenry County Found, the McHenry County Conservation Foundation is, but also what we're working to achieve and how our partnership with the district is really critical to our success and the success of the district in a lot of ways. So, we're gonna talk about building a culture of philanthropy. Next slide. First off, it's important to know who the foundation is, right? Um, and fortunately, we had our joint board meeting in September, so for most of you, this is gonna be kind of an old hat. But the McHenry County Conservation Foundation was established in nineteen ninety-nine as a five oh one C three supporting organization. This means that we are closely tied to the district in that you oversee, um, some of our operations. However, our board does operate independently once they are appointed by the district's Board of Trustees. And Elizabeth serves as an advisor, or the acting executive director does at the time, and you guys appoint a board liaison to our board to help inform decisions that they make. Since two thousand and eighteen, the relationship between the Conservation District and the foundation has been outlined by a memorandum of understanding, um, which is currently being approved for an update by your board at this meeting. That memorandum of understanding was essentially put in place at the time when the foundation decided to hire an executive director. And it ensures that the district and the foundation maintain a close partnership as they do share responsibility for the executive director position. The work of the foundation has helped pass two successful bond referendums, one in two thousand and one and one in two thousand and seven, securing one hundred forty-one point five million dollars in support of land acquisition, restoration, and stewardship. And additionally, the foundation has secured more than four point five million dollars in support of conservation, recreation, and environmental education. And you'll see that over the course of the foundation's existence, its purpose has kind of evolved. Next slide.
I remember like he said that you should hook up with me for.
In two thousand and eighteen, the foundation board worked to pull together a comprehensive three-year strategic plan, of which you see a high-level overview in front of you. This, uh, strategic plan is ending in two thousand and twenty-one, and the foundation board has opted to forego creating a new year, a new three-year plan in order to better align our work with the Conservation District. So, the Conservation District's strategic plan, I believe, ends in twenty-three or twenty-four, and at that time, the foundation board will work together with the district board of trustees to create a strategic plan that is more aligned, um, with what the district's goals are. Next slide. So, in order to kind of understand why the foundation is moving in a direction of philanthropy, I think it's important to understand why. As you can see here, it's a graphic pulled from a report that was, uh, published by the Nature Conservancy, the Trust for Public Lands, and one other organization, I can't remember off the top of my head.
You're like, like.
In two thousand and nineteen, and it highlights the support that has been given to conservation in Illinois beginning in nineteen ninety-eight through two thousand and eighteen. And as you can see, support on a state level, um, and really on a governmental level as a whole, has dropped off dramatically. And organizations like the district, um, committed to land projects at a time when they had bond referendums that allowed them to purchase land and acquire land with the understanding that funding would be there, and it's created a funding gap, and the foundation is there to fill that gap. Next slide. Some of the ways we've done that, I'm gonna give you a quick overview of some projects that you might be familiar with. We help purchase land, um, that is critical to acquiring, especially when it has innate natural value. One of those projects is the Boy, the former Boy Scout Camp Lakota over in Heartland Township, which lies next to Brookdale Conservation Area. This conservation, uh, acquisition was critical to preserving a migratory corridor and several important wetlands. Next slide. Reintroduction of dwindling species. The foundation recently supported the planting of turtle heads on district wetland sites, which is the, uh, larval host plant of the Baltimore Checker Spot Butterfly, a native species here that due to habitat destruction is a rare site at this point. Next slide.
Just wait a second. Can we get them?
She, she's taking care of it.
And another example is the making conservation accessible for all. We recently supported the installation of an ADA accessible pier at the Glacial Park Bog, which gives visitors a varying ability, is the, the chance to immerse themselves in a really rare ecosystem. And all of these projects were made possible thanks to donor support. Next slide. Those donors come to the foundation through a variety of paths, and some of them overlap. There are foundations, there are volunteers, there are hunters, there are event sponsors, there are anglers. The one thing that they all have in common, however, is that they are passionate about the work of the district. Because as many of you know, the foundation exists to accept gifts and implement projects, and those projects are priorities for the district. We don't have anything that we offer people as far as programming or many volunteer opportunities are concerned. So, all of our supporters are district supporters. Next slide. And before we get into kind of the culture of philanthropy that we're trying to build, I think it's important to get an overview of just philanthropy in America in general. I think it's important to get an overview of just philanthropy in America in general. This slide was pulled together by GivingUSA. They do it annually. And it's a quick snapshot of who's giving and what are they giving to. As you can see, individuals make up by far the largest chunk of the giving pie. And environmental giving efforts make up one of the smallest pieces of philanthropy with 3%. Right in line with how much people give to individuals, which makes having a culture of philanthropy between the district and the foundation of utmost importance. Because we are trying to gather those individuals who interact with people on the district side and convince them that they should support that work in an arena that oftentimes doesn't get a whole lot of funding. Next slide. So, what is the difference between a culture of philanthropy and a culture of charity? Right? You'll often hear the two words used interchangeably. And prior to 2018 and the hiring of an executive director, the foundation really operated as a charity. They passively received gifts. They were focused on fundraising transactions, which was kind of our annual appeal, asking people once a year, once that gift was received, it was a one-and-done. Relationships are really one-dimensional. People contribute. There isn't any follow-up as to what their donation has made possible. They are not invited to events and it's short-term. It's focused on what your organization needs on a year-to-year basis. In 2018, we started really focusing on building a culture of philanthropy, not only within the foundation, but also involving district staff and trustees in that pursuit. Our culture of philanthropy is that we actively pursue philanthropic investments. We don't wait for donors to come to us. We seek them out. And we also have a number of people on the district side who, when they interact with volunteers or corporate executives or friends or family, if it comes up, their desire is to help support conservation. Staff knows to direct them to the foundation. We're focused on building multi-dimensional relationships. So, this is inviting people to events, be they foundation events, be they district events, and trying to maintain a relationship with the district so that when people show up to a district event, like the Big Woods, they're made aware that there's a foundation that exists and the foundation helps make that work possible. Those events should be transformational. At this point, the foundation, I wouldn't say has achieved that, but that's the ultimate goal, right? That you invite people to these events and people are transformed into donors as well as really impacted by the event that you host. And it's focused on longer-term societal needs. As I had mentioned, strategic plan alignment is a big part of that. Really focused on what the long-term goals are of the district and how the foundation can help support them. Next slide. And the key characteristics of this culture of philanthropy, how do we achieve a culture of philanthropy between the district and the foundation? Development, otherwise known as fundraising, right? Is valued as a mission-aligned program. The foundation might be a separate organization, but its only mission is to support the work of the district. And so, it needs to be aligned with the goals and values of the programs that are taking place on the district side. Shared accountability for fundraising. Fundraising success is everybody's responsibility, from the board to the employees, to the director of development. It's not a one-person job. Leadership is engaged in fundraising. The executive leadership team on the district side has been very engaged in helping the foundation determine what our goals are, what projects we need to support. There's a quality programming and reputation involved. And that is for both entities. And we know, as Elizabeth outlined a few moments ago, just highlighting staff successes and how desired staff are to serve on external committees and external projects, that quality programming and reputation is already really solid on the district side. A commitment to dialogue and stewardship, and this isn't land stewardship, this is donor stewardship, right? We are all committed to having conversations with donors, to making an ask, to sending somebody along to the foundation so they can make an ask, and continuing to let people know what we need funding for and what they've made possible. There are opportunities for engagement and there's demonstrated articulated need for support. Next slide. Essentially, building a culture of philanthropy is all about creating opportunities for people to engage. Those opportunities can be projects, they can be programs, they can be events. But they're things that people not only give to, but things they benefit from, things that they can engage with. Next slide. And by creating those opportunities, we build this culture of philanthropy wherein those supporters we mentioned earlier, those people who maybe passively engage with the district, start to feel good about that relationship. It's no longer that they just hike a site, but that they are actively involved in the maintenance of it. And we make them feel good about the work that they are doing. And they become donors and they continue to donate. Next slide. So, as we have started to build this culture of philanthropy, right? Quick snapshot of kind of where we were and where we're going to. What you have before you is our overall fundraising success in fiscal year 2018, in 2019, and in 2020. In both 2020 and 2019, we did have two special projects that we garnered a lot of donor support for, which has really impacted our growth in those areas and will probably not be reflected in the coming fiscal year. But as you can see, we are growing, which is fantastic. And some of the numbers to pay specific attention to are our new donors. We've brought in almost 500 new donors since fiscal year 18. And there was one other number which might be on the other slide. Sorry, this is really small for me this way. Yeah, next slide. And our year-to-date fundraising progress. On this slide, of particular note, in my opinion, is the revenue that we've brought in and the growth of that revenue compared to last year. Special projects aside, from July of this year to mid-November of this year, we have increased donor support by almost 200%. Next slide. And that's to say that I didn't do this alone as the foundation executive director. Our board hasn't done it alone. Everyone has a role in this culture of philanthropy in getting somebody to make their first gift, in showing them how that first gift made a difference, and growing their relationship with both of our organizations. Next slide. So, some of the ways that I am here to encourage you as trustees of the district to get involved, know our mission. If you're not familiar with the foundation's mission yet, we have brochures. You can take one home and kind of familiarize yourself with what our mission is. Share our vision. It's in alignment with the district's vision. So, you probably already share that. And grow your impact. We, I had a conversation with every member of the board of trustees today and I want to thank you all for having conversations with me around fundraising. Growing your impact isn't just donating, right? Growing your impact is being able to have a conversation with people around the importance of conservation in McHenry County and how they can ensure that the sites and spaces that are managed by the conservation district continue to provide for years, decades, centuries to come. Planned giving. We have a planned giving program. And if you are so inclined and want to have a conversation about that, I'm happy to do so. But knowing that your friends and family members have the ability to leave a legacy with public space in McHenry County is important, I think, to have in your back pocket. And follow us on Facebook. Keep up to date on what we do. Join our email list. It's a separate email list than what the district sends out. It updates all of our donors and supporters on what their contributions make possible. As a result, many of you are probably already on that mailing list and you should just open the emails if you're not already doing so. Next slide. And finally, Giving Tuesday, right? A week away and I would be remiss not to bring it up, primarily because this year, we are fortunate enough to be able to offer a dollar-for-dollar match to people who give on Giving Tuesday. And that match was made possible thanks to the support of every member of this board. So, thank you very much for that. One other action step to take is that I will be posting about it on social media. And if you are on Facebook and are so inclined to share that request to your network, it would really be helpful. And that is kind of the end of my presentation. Does anybody have any questions about the foundation, a culture of philanthropy, how to get involved, anything of that nature?
Looks like we're not getting any questions right now. Shawna?
All right, wonderful.
I think our meeting here a couple of months ago was very helpful also. So, I look forward to another one of those.
I agree. The foundation board very much appreciated your time and I think that it was very helpful for us as well.
Yeah, well, we look forward to continuing to work with the foundation and with you. So, thank you for your time this evening.
Of course. Thank you for having me.
Thanks, Shawna.
That brings us to trustee report. Anything we, we, right now, anybody here on the board?
Just a couple of things that came up between last meeting and this meeting. Shawna actually attended as well. We, Elizabeth, we went to the Economic Development Corporation annual dinner, so we've actually been all three of us. And I really think it's a great opportunity to, when Shawna talks about growing our influence, part of growing the influence, I really feel is like just being present, you know, and making those connections. And, you know, some things did come out of that first year. This year, one of the things I really would like to see at some point is just trying to kind of build that narrative that we're a part of the economic economy, we're a part of what makes McHenry County a desirable place for businesses, where they can house their corporate headquarters or whatever, attracting people who want to live here. We're a great setting and that we continue to be an economic driver here in McHenry County. We are as important as any other business in the county. And just having that opportunity, in fact, I just learned, letters I got was from somebody I had met that evening. And so, that can be a nice contact, but, I mean, that's an opportunity to talk about what we bring to people. And anytime we can do that, I think is a great opportunity. And I wouldn't mind at some point if we were the speaker to show that what we can do for the county and what we do. The speaker was from Scottport, did a fabulous job. I haven't had time to get on my notes on that, but he, he did an amazing job. He talked, he, it's a lot about their corporate culture. And when they come to these things, they're all wearing these flag jackets. And they've got a really kind of neat culture. And he, one of the things that struck me and I have to kind of, like I said, I like look at my notes and thought that, but it's not just, it's not just shareholders, it's stakeholders. And then we know our taxpayers are stakeholders, but stakeholders are everybody, including your employees. You know, in this case, the land and the animals and plants that inhabit it. So, just kind of creating that culture. So, anyway, great opportunity for anybody who thinks in the future. The other thing, oh, Teck-Matek had their annual meeting. It was virtual. It was about dam removal on the Fox River and what that impacts the water quality. And Cindy Jablonski, our wildlife biologist, presented, did a fabulous job. So, that was a very interesting program. That's a big conversation right now is what's going to happen with the quality of the Fox River as certain dams are removed. Those up here probably will never be, but there are a few that will be. The other one was the Crystal Lake Fetter 100 year anniversary, nice event over at Main Beach. That was just a nice opportunity to talk to other commissioners and some of the challenges that they have been facing. There is our webinar series that kind of comes out of the Walder Foundation, Teck-Matek Foundation. I think Chicago Gardens has been helping promote it. They've got four little webinars on there. I know they've all been recorded. One spoke to the health benefits of nature and they're getting more and more able to measure, actually with science and data, to measure health outcomes. And so, that's another area where we are an asset in what we can bring in terms of better health outcomes for our residents.
Thank you. Charlie Liaison Report. Kelly?
Good evening. Can you guys hear me?
Very well, thank you.
Great, thank you. So, first, I want to say congratulations to all the employees who have had service anniversaries. That is, that's great. It's always telling that an organization has long-term, long-term employees. So, a couple of things here. First, we did pass the budget and the levy last week when we met. And we only added new growth. The first initial budget was adding CPI, but there were, I don't know if anybody listened to it. It was kind of a mess of a meeting. We had amendments to take off the CPI. And then somebody tried to take off new growth and we ended up passing it with just new growth. And yeah, that was, that was a long meeting where we actually had to ask what we were voting on each time. So, it was probably asked two or three times each time we took a vote because there were so many amendments. So, that's, that happened last week. Also, as I told you before, McHenry County is being divided up into nine districts and there'll be two county board members each district. Last week, we passed a committee structure that will have seven committees and seven people on each committee. So, some people will be on two committees, some will be on three. Those who are only on two will have liaison appointments. Currently, um, we have six committees, but the other resolution that we, um, passed last week was adding a new committee for, uh, Valley High Operating. So as of, as of Tuesday, we have seven, and we'll continue seven committees. Um, did we also approve a two-year contract, um, for the Environmental Defenders to manage McSeep again? And so I, that is just a continuation of the current contract. Um, I've told you before that, you know, the county received $60 million in American Rescue Plan money, and the portal was open November 1st for applications. And as of last week, I think there were already like 41 applications put in for that money. So I wouldn't say it's first come, first served, but it kind of is a little bit. So if you guys are going to apply, I would, I would do it as soon as possible. I, I don't think we have a chance of the money running out anytime soon, but you never know. Uh, another thing is, I, sure, I don't know if you guys have taken the survey, but there is a survey link to McHenry Moves to 2050. And that is to get everybody's opinion on, um, how you get around McHenry, why you use that mode of transportation. Um, it's pretty comprehensive. So if you don't have it, I can send Elizabeth a link to the information, and she can distribute it. We also passed a resolution for the Living Fence Program again. Uh, I don't know if anybody is partaking in it yet, but I, I really do like this program.
What was that?
Sorry, the Living Fence Program.
Okay, sorry, thank you.
Good. And, and I understand the hardships about it, and so I would really like to try to find a way that it would make it easier for farmers to plow that land or, you know, cultivate that land in the spring. I understand that's the main hardship along with the money issues, but, um, also, we, it looks like in December, we will be voting on that solar farm with Duke Energy. So it's going to planning, environment, and development in the December meeting, and then it will be come before the whole county board, most likely for that December meeting. Um, one thing that I was surprised to hear about, but I, I'm fine with it, of course, is that, so some of those barriers, the natural barriers that they're supposed to plant as part of the, uh, conditions of the zoning, they're actually not doing that, and they're planting crops there instead. So there will be living fences, um, along some of those roadways instead of the natural barriers. I, there, if anybody, um, you know, is interested in this, I would definitely have you go to the PED meeting. You'll see the staff recommendations, the staff report, and, and all the zoning, um, zoning, um, conditions. And last thing, um, January 29th is the People in Need Forum. That's at McHenry County College. It's an annual forum. And I'm on the steering committee for this, and I would urge the Conservation District to have a table there. I don't know if you have had one in the past, but this is something that all different kinds of organizations go to to see what kind of other organizations and other help there is in the county, and it's not just social services. Um, for example, the county itself is having nine different tables depending on, um, depending on the department. So there's McRide Sheriff's Office, uh, Planning and Development, and we're also creating one just for generic for the county government. So people such as the clerk, the coroner, um, HR will have different, um, information on the table that people can pick up. Then another thing that, um, that emergency management's going to have is a QR code. So if you want to sign up for communications from the department, or you want to get to their website, things like that, then you can have the QR code. It'll be there. And not only is it in person, they're also using Hoover as the, um, online meeting source. So there's all these tables. Right now, I think there's 85 tables that will be there, and then there's a bunch of presenters. So you, people present, I think it's usually about a half an hour long, and it, it can be hunger, um, social isolation, uh, it, there's a bunch of different topics. I can't think off the top of my head that people are presenting on. So I would urge you guys to have a table if you're interested. It's free because you're nonprofit, and I can give, um, give you the, the, the person to talk to if you want to do that. So, um, that's it for me, and I hope you guys all have a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. President's report. All I have to report is that I'm finished harvesting. We can go second and go back to the real world. Is it, uh, public comments? Do you have anybody out there who would like to comment?
There's no one out there now.
Now. Yeah, I'll laugh.
All right. That brings us to Board Business Consent Agenda. Lando, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, I would like to make the motion to approve the Board's consent agenda as stated. Ready? 12.1. Approval of minutes of previous meeting, 12.1A, October 26th, 2021, regular meeting. 12.1B, September 14th, 2021, executive session, regular meeting. 12.2, acceptance of treasurer's report, 12.2A, 1031, 2021. 12.3, ratifying resolution number 21-92, a resolution adopting the proclamation honoring Executive Director Elizabeth Essler for her leadership and commitment to excellence. 12.4, resolution number 21-93, a resolution establishing the regular meeting dates of the Board of Trustees of the McHenry County Conservation District for calendar year 2022. 12.5, resolution number 21-94, a resolution authorizing the executive director to execute the recreational trail, trails program RTV grant, number 20-160, in the amount of $200,000 for the Prairie Trail Renovations Project in the Home Light Road to Route 120. 12.6, ordinance number 21-1006, an ordinance amending comprehensive administration policy and procedural manual, number 7.02, natural ecosystem management. 12.7, first reading, amendments to comprehensive administration policy and procedural manual standards and conduct, conduct, whistle blower protection, safety act 2.06.02. 12.8, first reading, amendments to comprehensive administration policy and procedural manual, wildlife obligation rehabilitation and program programming. Number 7.03, 12.9, authorization to prepare specifications and letting of bids to secure the leasing of the 80-plus or minus acre COC 9839 parcel for an organic-only agricultural lease at Coon Creek. 12.10, authorization to prepare specifications and let bids to secure the leasing of the 8-plus or minus acre COW 11477 parcels at Coral Woods Conservation Area for the production for a period of three years. All right. 12.11, resolution number 21-95, a resolution authorizing the direct, executive director to execute the listed agricultural leases with terms beginning March 1st, 2022, on 22 parcels containing approximately 1,953.09 plus or minus acres. Coon Creek, do I need to read that? No, I think we just list the name and then the individual. All right. To Tom Buring at point 241%, Coon Creek to David Giles at point 4824%. Coon Creek to Pat Reef at point 3745%, Coon Creek to Bill Waters at point 331%. Coral Woods to Joe Henning at point 32%, Glacial Park to Ryan Stadi at point 30%. Hallows to Randy Easty at point 3479%, Quomkin Prairie to Dan Ziller at point 31%, Fishwaki Corridor to Jim and Marilyn, Marilyn Osterberg at point 3016% Fishwaki Corridor to Jim and Marilyn Osterberg at point 3016% Fishwaki Corridor to Joe Henning at point 3594% Fishwaki Corridor to George and Vicky Priest.
Rising.
Rising at point 2867% Fishwaki Corridor to Dan and Denise Sass at point 3306% Fishwaki Corridor to George and Vicky. I mean, so you just said it.
Rising.
Rising, thank you. At point 3125% Fishwaki Corridor to Jeremy Easty at point 335% Fishwaki Corridor to Alan Schering at point 36% Fishwaki Corridor to Amy Giles at point 333% Fishwaki Corridor East to Don and Cody Perdom at point 3953% Lusby Marsh to Gary Harp at point 44% at Marengo Ridge to George and Vicky.
Rising.
I want to say Freezy, Rising at point 25%. Um, 12.12, resolution number 21-96, a resolution authorizing the executive director to execute, execute the listed joint grassland venture leases with terms beginning March 1st, 2022, on seven parcels containing approximately 310.46 plus or minus acres. Glacial Park to Travis Howland and Hollyan at $39 acre. Pleasant Valley to Cody Book at $33 an acre. Pleasant Valley to Cody Brook at 52 an acre. To Pleasant Valley to Joe and Beth Clark at 26.42 an acre. Rush Creek to Michael and Ann Allen at $55 acre. Stickney Run to Tom Burning at $21 acre. And Stickney Run to Tom Burning at $21 per acre. 12.13, resolution number 21.97, a resolution appointing Brad Semel, 2022 to 2025, and Kim Becker, 2022 to 25, 2025, as directors to the McHenry County Conservation District. Oh, yes.
What's that?
It's foundation. It is not district.
I don't see that.
I thought, oh, my gosh.
Lisa shall second it.
Just real quick. I just wanted to thank Brad and Kim for signing up again. I was talking to Sean earlier when he called everybody. And Brad has been serving for 20 years already. He started on the foundation in 2001, and Kim started in 2005, and so they've really been dedicated. It's nice to see that they want to continue to be a part of it. Thank you for all the time.
Um, oh, we're going to do that with that, please, if I, we're going to pull those two, is that what we're going to do?
So you should pull, make, uh, now that we've read them, uh, the motions and lists. If you want to recuse yourself in 1211, then I would go ahead and submit a motion to pass all with the exception of moving 1211. So 12.1 to 12.10, and 12.12 to 12.30.
So.
The motion to pass, 12.1 to 12.10, and then 12, 12 to 12.13. Do you accept a friendly amendment to?
There's a second. So we're voting for everything but 12.11, and I'll recuse myself on 12.11. Okay, roll call, please.
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Gaten?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Don?
Yes.
Trustee Fritz?
Yes.
Trustee Henny?
Yes. You know.
Motion to approve 12.11.
Second. I said, okay, that's my second. Um, I'm recusing because Joe Henning is my brother, so, um, we'll go ahead and roll, 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 please.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Don?
Yes.
Trustee Thomas?
Uh, yes.
Trustee Gaten?
Yes.
Trustee Fritz?
Yes.
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Trustee Henny?
Now I'll recuse myself, so motion carries 6.0. Okay. Here's this other board business. Approval of bills table for the month, about over 2021. Lynn, do you want to take it from here?
Um, internal audit, I actually am not, am not pulling anything.
Oh, my gosh, don't look at me either.
I looked through and I didn't.
Maybe, maybe pull one or anything.
No, okay, so what I'll do is, um, Angie, I'll get three pulled um, and send it out to him, and we'll do that the next month. Sorry about that. It's just, my husband is put surgery, and it's been a very long weekend.
It's not mandatory every month, but just, I know that auditors want to see that we're doing that, but it happens.
There's, there's no mandate that says this has to be, three have to be pulled every month, or any has to be pulled every month, so. There's flex, there's flexibility.
We're not going to do it this month.
Okay.
All right. Go ahead, Lynn.
So, um, I want to move, uh, for the approval of payment discounted FFS as indicated on the submission of bills pending report to the period ending October 31st, 2021.
There's a second.
All serving.
The bill has a second? Roll call.
Trustee Fritz?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Don?
Yes.
Trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Trustee Gaten?
Yes.
Trustee Henny?
Now I'll, I'll abstain. Motion carries 6.1. Next motion, please.
I move that we approve the payment of the balance of bills as indicated on the submission of bills pending report for the month ending October 31st, 2021.
Second, you ready? Chris has the second. A roll call.
Trustee Don?
Yes.
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Fritz?
Yes.
Trustee Gaten?
Yes.
Trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Henny?
Yes, motion carries unanimously. Brings us to the Division of Operations and Public Safety and Restructure. Are you leading this off, Elizabeth, or?
Yeah, just briefly, we discussed it during the COW in, in detail. And so what we have in front of you is just a motion. There's two actions. One, to approve, um, the titles, job descriptions and titles. Um, there were no rate changes that were involved with this, and so this just maps everything, uh, going forward. So we give you a motion for that, and the second one is to approve the hiring of the two new positions of the building manager supervisor in the planner or landscape architect of the Division of Operations and Public Safety.
Okay, so 13.2A. Um, Ray, you make the motion. I think it's Ray need to read that. Do it. Should I read this?
If you would, please.
Uh, make a motion to approve the job description title, title changes of Division of Operations and Public Safety positions as written. Um, oh, sorry, consideration of motion for that, number 21-98, a resolution approving job description and title changes followed. Division of Operations and Public Safety Positions, Director of Operations and Public Safety to Director of Operations, Planning and Public Safety, grade 24, Schedule A. Planning Manager to Planning and Development Manager, grade 22, Schedule A. Sites and Fleet Manager to Operation Manager, grade 21, Schedule A. Administration Assistant Sites and Fleet to Administrative Assistant Operations, grade 13, Schedule A. Landscape Architect 2 to Senior Planner or Senior Landscape Architect, grade 22, Schedule B. Site Supervisor to Parks and Fleet Supervisor, grade 21, Schedule B. Facilities Maintenance Supervisor to Building Maintenance Supervisor, grade 20, Schedule B. Landscape Architect 1 to Planner or Landscape Architect, grade 19, Schedule B. Ranger to Park. Park Ranger 2, grade 17, Schedule B. Assistant Ranger to Park Ranger 1, at grade 13, Schedule B. Maintenance Worker 2, grade 19, Schedule B. Maintenance Worker 1, grade 17, Schedule B. Mechanic 2, grade 19, Schedule B. Mechanic 1, grade 16, Schedule B. Custodian, grade 9, Schedule B. And eliminating the positions of Facilities Maintenance Manager, grade 20, Schedule A.
All right, is there a second?
I will second that.
You want the seconds? There are any discussion on that motion. So you're done? I'll call the roll.
Trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Gaten?
Yes.
Trustee Fritz?
Yes.
Trustee Don?
Yes.
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Henny?
Yes, motion carries unanimously. Uh, either the, or can motion for 13.2B?
All right, we'll roll with it.
Okay, okay, Ray, this one's a little shorter, a little easier.
Consideration of motion to adapt resolution number 21-99, a resolution authorizing the hiring for the position of Building Maintenance Supervisor, grade 20, Schedule B, and Planner, Landscape Architect, grade 19, Schedule B, and fiscal year 2022.
Good, thank you. Second. Chris has the second. Oh, any discussion? Can we have any questions? Big roll.
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Gaten?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Don?
Yes.
Trustee Fritz?
Yes.
Trustee Henny?
Yes, motion carries unanimously. Brings us to 14.0, Executive Directors Report.
All right, legislative update. Uh, been interacting with legislators. I mean, if there's any interest in any type of legislation uh, for the new
Uh, for the new year, um, they'll be kicking bills in by January, so, um. Uh, so I don't know if we got anything, but we're following that, so if there was something that there was an interest that we wanted to pursue. Um, now would be the time to to get this conversation, so. Um, the follow up with the rest of our old engineers we talked about, correspondence will be going out to everybody, uh, so you know, so that will be following up if we discuss. Um, and then just a few announcements here, um, I did, and I'll just pass this around, the Illinois Association of Park Districts. Uh, did send, um, information about the gala, and there's some pictures here with the letter, they also sent another correspondence onto the district. Um, about, um, the fifty anniversary book that we did, and and uh, there's just the compliments to the board and staff. And then, um, Landscape Magazine is out, if you've seen that, um, that's in the mail, it's live, and uh, again, uh, great article by President Henny, and just great work at the foundation. That's going on, and then, um, I guess I'll just leave one last thing, I don't want to run over into the committee reports too that I had, was the, um. District is also looking at planning a update of our conservation congress, we had a planning group of just our staff, what that would look like, but normally we've done it in February or even here. And from a programming perspective, we're beginning to explore what that would look like and what the conversation would be. Uh, similarly with our sustaining the dream conversation we had, strategic planning, but that would be around earth day, so we're exploring an earth day concept. Uh, to be able to hold, uh, a one day activity, uh, we bring our, the groups of interested individuals together. And I'll leave my other reports to the legislators.
Elizabeth. I'd like to say real quick, since we're talking about the legislative update, next Tuesday on the thirtieth at our lawn government meeting, all the local. Uh, and state legislators will be attending the lawn government meeting, so if anybody's interested. In attending that meeting, it is at the county board, or county administration building on the second floor. On the thirtieth at eight thirty in the morning.
Thank you, Kelly.
Bill.
Is it appropriate at this time to ask a question about a matter that, you know, has come up and is being considered?
Sure, it's not an executive session item, but it's an open, yeah, sure, please.
Was there reference to a foster home and a, a group, I presume a. Private group, we're interested in looking at land that might be available. Uh. Who perhaps construct and utilize, or, or. As I understood it, a foster home for children in the county town who are presently sent sent out of the town, so I. I mean, that to me seems very interesting, interesting, and. I wasn't sure who that, who comprises that organization, what is. What are their credentials, is it a not for profit, uh, obviously, there's a lot of state money that goes into. Um, care of foster children. So, um, at some point, I would like to hear, be better informed about this. Beyond just the geography of, um, if we have a suitable, uh, spot. Where this might take place, and I don't know how the planning is going, but, um. Well.
Yeah, so the initial conversation, uh, with this group that recently became the five oh one C, I gave you, I sent everybody a link, and I can reset that again, the board of directors, they are nonprofit. Um, they are just starting with the general prospectus of what they're looking for, um, if the board would like more time, I'm sure we could invite them to, um, lean to kind of share their organization and some background. As far as the district's perspective, we take any information and we're just doing some general exploratory, and and once we were to identify something, that would be something that we would talk with the board in the first session. Uh, if in fact it was to deal with real estate, but right now, um, again, we're just taking a very basic high level, um, of notes based on what they have requested.
Or as it, as it progresses, when it becomes, uh, appropriate, I would very much be interested in having them present to the board. You know, who they are, what their background is, and. So.
Sure.
Hey, anything else?
That's all.
Okay, then we'll move on to, uh, please. Uh, trustee's report on conference meetings attended, Fox River ecosystem, then.
Oh, yes, okay. So the meeting we just had was, um, our mom, and it was spring in the fox, and I'm talking about, um, what will happen, uh, to river quality and. But standing water and the purchase of the fox, I remember that last time, um, next month is just a holiday gathering.
What does happen with the quality of the water when?
Well, there's still, there's a lot of sediment that can come, um, from it, because it's not that free flow, and so. You'll see in areas where they've actually have removed dams, muscle, uh, populations have rebounded, and so there's, there's a lot of ecological. Um, benefit from removing them, um, people are concerned that, you know, they're going to lose. That something's gonna happen with, where they're recreating, and there are areas, and I'm not exactly, this is not my area. But I know that there are areas more like McHenry Dam where there's a lot of recreation bonds behind the dam, right? And so it's, it's, my, my understanding is that's probably one area that probably was never getting. Um, but Carperner's Dam was scheduled to be moved, I think there's been put up a whole, but, um. There are places where if you open that water can run, you know, but that's still filled up and then.
Yeah.
Um, and so then their, their holiday party is next month, so.
And that's it.
Fishwaki, uh, Ray.
Yes, uh, so correct, uh. November fifth. Um. We said, they said the, uh, the meetings, uh, first Friday of every odd month from September the fourth, anybody who's here to join. Um, they talk about, um, possibly trying to get, uh, a program that I, that Nycor is running, uh. They have this stewardship and, uh, land preservation program of that, their goal is to provide grants. Uh, to save ten thousand acres, um, so they were looking at that and trying to count that program. Um. And another large topic of prep was the Save the Bubble Prairie, um. Uh, at the moment, uh, the Natural Land Institute, uh, is, uh, working to. Uh, to get a, uh, reva, to get money, uh, for a revised, uh, concept. Uh, that would better accommodate, uh, the prairie and the expansion of the airport. Um. And, uh, one of the main takeaways that I got from it was that, um. They're trying to find a way to do both and not just stop the expansion of the airport, um, it's really more of a, how do you get the airport and the prairie preserved. Uh, not one or the other.
What is, what is DIRT supposed to move on?
There is an off stop until March first.
Um, was it supposed to start before that, then?
Yeah, um, I think they, they, they did do some work. Um, and then they did get a, uh, they got, they got the stop work until March first, and then. Um, they're trying to hopefully get something in place for a redesign of that.
Definitely, definitely, okay, great, thank you. Fishwaki rulers.
Okay, I mentioned before, so save the date, if you can join us, we would love to have you present, December eighth, at three thirty P M to six thirty, awards will start about four thirty. Uh, we're gonna be celebrating, um, the excellent geological restoration program, uh, Lacial Park will be receiving a platinum distinction on the. Uh, restoration work that they've done based on the recovery plan, recovery plan, and then, as we mentioned before, Ed Collins will be receiving the. Third round, um, once again, so you can, I'll send out the R S C P again, if you can make the trip, if you'd like to join us, we'd love to have you.
Anything else, the. Okay.
Um, I'm sharing my farm bureau. Uh, meet, monthly meeting was canceled due to lack of corn. Right. Although they did have a community harvest on November sixth. At the farm bureau, but some of the young farmers arranged that, and what that is, there was a. Local farmer that was ill, and he had like two hundred acres of corn and a bunch of stalk bales to make. Um, so that was on Saturday, so they arranged, I mean, harvests, two hundred plus acres of corn and. Paid for a thousand, um, brown bales of stalks, that was on Saturday. That's on about, I don't know, four thirty. Died of sick, passed away on Sunday, COVID.
Oh.
But then they had, oh, that, you know, uh, people, uh, up here, they, uh, provided food, and then they had that, uh. Women, women's committee, federal women's committee, they kind of written your own passion, so it's better.
First amazing, definitely got them like that.
Why people they, they end up with one. They don't have a piece of something.
There's, I think there were those three combines, and, um, well, actually four, because they had, you know. Bunch of trucks, and I don't know, bunch of.
They gave them those thousands of bills, they.
Yeah.
Thousands of big round bills.
Yeah.
And actually.
Then they, they would grab them, they, so that kind of preserves, so they don't be like, you get that.
Can I ask a question, what do you do with the round bale of corns?
For bedding, for cattle.
Dairy cattle.
Oh.
So you use it, so they didn't have any straw.
They, they have a large area of stand, but.
So they followed the combine, they chopped and followed the combine, like the rake and then. Bailed. Yeah, fields are kind of scattered around.
Oh, Rebecca Elizabeth, your next.
Okay, just as a reminder that we want to attend the Illinois Association of Park District I C A R annual conference in January, it's in Chicago. And, um, we normally have our legislators, we'll be, uh, we'll, we'll, Megan, to get our invites out. To our state elected officials, um, they usually like to visit the dozen and host, um, our table with the other local park districts, county park district, three park districts, county park district. And like night forest preserve, so we will kind of position our legislators, so we host that, so if you're interested in attending, if not the full conference, if you'd like to attend the Friday. Luncheon and the workshops that are there, there, they have a lot for governance and boards on that particular day, there's a lot of, um. Uh, a lot of legal councils, uh, that represent the different, have a lot of subjects that are always put picked up on, that may lead us to a board level. Um, this year, it's not a, last year, there was a hybrid or a low option, they weren't in person, this year it is in person.
What's the date of that?
Uh, that is January, with the early bird, you want to get registered by December thirteenth to get the savings. The conference itself is the twenty seventh, twenty eighth, and twenty ninth. January, the end of the month. And then usually, um, the Illinois Association of Conservation Forest Preserve Districts will also do meeting. And then, um, the new, uh, Illinois Park and Recreation and the I C A R Forest Preserve Conservation Section will be, uh, obviously more official now, but we'll. Kind of first board's form in, and, uh, of which. Oh, there's some of them.
Vision.
Okay, so I was, wasn't, not in attendance, but I, I don't know if everybody got, gets these emails, but I do want to tell you. Thanks, everybody, for giving Tuesday, that they were awarded the ten thousand dollar grant for the Jerry and Bill Cowlin Foundation General Operations Native Seed. Native Seed Nursery at High Plains, which is awesome. And then, I, I do believe, Elizabeth, they can, they got the grant for IDM there. In support of the Habitat Restoration at Pleasant Valley and the purchase of the. Blau, how do you say that, Blau back? I guess, seed harvester, whatever.
It's the city harvester for thirty six thousand six hundred thirty dollars, so they're.
That's really awesome, yeah.
It's a grand, it was a grand.
Yeah.
They're peopleizer.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, as well.
Yeah.
Fifty some dollars dollars.
Yeah, they're, they're.
Very good.
They're doing good things. So I don't know, Elizabeth, do you want to add anything else?
There'll be, uh, well, you started presentation tonight, they are really, it's very exciting, they're very, yes, if they have a lot of brainstorming, I think they're very have special meeting.
They are in December.
In December, it's Brad Drys, um, at some point, they want to have another presentation, they're being together to see how they can support us with our sustaining the dream. Uh, with our deep division, uh, that we have, but, um, they're, they're very, all sorts of possibilities, and then they just.
They are rolling, so it's nice, it's really, it's, they are very active, which is nice to hear, so.
And Sean is doing a, a, a great job.
She is. And it's not easy.
But thank you, and thank you, uh, trusty Thomas for your support of. And everyone for giving to us.
Hey, County Council of Government, Lynn.
Um, they're having, um. The November meeting was canceled because of lack of attendance, um, they're, they are going ahead with their holiday dinner on December fifteenth, I think Elizabeth sent out the invite for everybody, so. Elizabeth and you should go in and have fun, and December fifteenth, it's, um. It's right to one five. But it's at the Chris Lake Holiday, yeah. Like I just said, I think Elizabeth should send it out.
Read it.
Send drinks, um. So this month, it's doing, trying to do something more for the holidays, it's food, wine, and brews for the holidays. The speaker will be Zach Joelzall from Jesus Al House, um, Beth Alberger from Chris Lake Brewing, and Ryan O'Shea from Metaraw Wines. Um, again, it will be, they're gonna up limit people, so they're allowing forty people into the room. Um, and then we're also gonna continue to pirate, because you do have, because you do, you're not ready to. To venture out yet, and we just, which is perfectly fine, get up with the twenty plus, um, online, so anyway, so it's nice to keep them in the loop. Each speaker will talk briefly about, uh, how they approach their craft, um, in an environment where these things are away, and then there'll be a taste, tasting afterwards. Obviously not at Nuns, but.
But people may taste at home.
They'll taste at home.
They got your shampoos.
That's right, they actually, they can buy ahead this time, right, and they can do it with them, they can practice.
They may be even less limited than people.
They'll do more to taste it, so.
Okay. Um, that brings us to, um. The bicycle was, uh. I don't.
Yes, uh, there's, there is, there is, uh, no report this month.
Okay, thank you, she have something?
Well, we, well. Thinking of talking about the bicycle, but as soon as I, I, just bikes, okay, so I was at, um, Dome, Chris Lake does that farmers market at the Dome.
Mm-hmm.
Well, towards the end of the season, they put up the, um, the, McRide, what's it called? Uh, the ride share, uh, the, the divvy bikes, right, and they had a bank now of bikes at the Dome mansion, and most of them were ours, because we had made that donation several years back. And it made me wonder if at some point, a, a bank like that would make sense at, say, our, uh, Lacial Park. Uh, parking lot. Next to the Prairie Trail, because there are people who like to maybe hop on a bike for a little bit, but can't fall a bike on the cars. Maybe they're out, put them, you know, a day, and maybe they can rent a bike and maybe go up into Richmond and have lunch, or go back down to this important Henry. But maybe that's a location, something to be thinking about, um, I don't know, but. That's just, that's always up there, so I don't know if that makes.
We, we had been, uh, visited McHenry County, and spearheaded that, we contributed as one of the co-sponsors, writing this position downtown Richmond, right off the Prairie Trail. And didn't get a lot of that activity and pulling it in, and so they re-grouped with how they were servicing, so I'm wondering. If it shifted hands or how the bikes and, and other local being, if they're done, I don't know, that was visiting McHenry, I don't know if your group just had any discussion on that.
Yes, the, the science behind it is that, or the, what they've learned about it is that typically. Those banks of bicycles or, uh, the stations, uh, do better, uh, get more use when they're near a. Uh, do better, uh, get more use when they're near a population center that has access to a trail or open space or, you know, things like that, so. Centering it into the, you know, the, the crystal lakes, the woodstocks, the, um. Um, you know, in the downtown areas, Elgonquin, et cetera, all of those, those are the areas that tend to generate more use, uh, of those things. People go there, they start there, and then they branch out, they don't typically go to drive to Glacial Park or a, a rural park like that and then get on and go. Um, so it's almost the center of the city that actually kind of is the trip generator, that was, uh, that has been reported, uh, that's what King County experienced. And the year that it was up and operating before COVID in McHenry County, we saw the same thing.
Okay, that makes sense.
Hey. I'll visit McHenry County.
So visiting McHenry County, we're especially probably leaving, um, last week. We go last week, which is on Tuesday, right, together, and they officially will be changing their name, as you know, they've been going as a destination marketing organization, they've been looking at branding. Uh, for some time, and they will be now known as, uh, kind of the tag is naturally McHenry County. Um, naturally being built on a variety of things, uh, naturally made, natural areas, uh, natural, uh, food and agricultural, and so that was the focus, uh, with the tagline wonderful places. Wide open spaces, and so that branding will allow, beginning at the first year, as you were talking about, how the conservation district as well as the points of interest that you have in McHenry County. The agritourism, uh, but specifically where the conservation district amenities is definitely, uh, a good player in economic development, and, uh. Hopefully bring out all what you can do while you're here to raise a family, but destination to come in from outside of country to county, but naturally McHenry versus visit was discussed. Because we want to ensure that individuals that are living here are also experiencing different aspects of it.
Anyone else have any other outreach contacts to point out?
The only thing I will say with the lines pre-arsed, with the communication that came in last week, staff met, we will follow up with correspondence as we begin to look at this, and like I said, I will send out. Fire report, um, that we did present, we, we look back, I think we last year, the report is about twenty eighteen, um, when we gave, uh, kind of a showing of what is occurred. Uh, we were able to get some ground footage of, of disonference, and perhaps things like that, so we'll, we'll show you, and we'll bring it back to you and, uh. Kind of where we're at, and potentially next steps.
Only comments, have we gathered any public since, uh, we asked last for them?
No, there, there is none.
Okay, thank you, uh, so all we need is a motion to adjourn.
I make that one.
I have Lynn and I have Bill over here.
Uh, roll call.
Well, we've already gone seven minutes past, but you got. I, I feel the pressure.
Trustee Fritz.
Yes.
Trustee Cook.
Yes.
Trustee Don.
Yes.
Trustee Campbell.
Yes.
Trustee Thomas.
Yes.
Trustee Gaten.
Yes.
Trustee Henny.
Yes, we are adjourned.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Yeah, happy Thanksgiving to everyone out there.